Here.
Councilmember Laura.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lutz.
Here.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez.
Here.
All present. Thank you. Let's begin with the invocation. Do we have a copy of the prayers? Mayor Pro Tem, could you lead us in that, please, again?
Absolutely. If we can all stand and... Thank you. Bow your heads. Thank you. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for the privilege of allowing the members of council for serving as elected officials for our beautiful city of Pico Rivera. I pray for those who are in positions of authority and leadership, that they make decisions correctly. We thank you for the commitment to our community, all of the staff members and the council that are here, and the dedication that they provide to our city. Help us discern between the good and the bad choices and to make wise decisions. Decisions that will contribute to the growth and the integrity of our city and work for the benefit of our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Lieutenant Hernandez, can you lead us in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Today, we are really excited to have a proclamation here in front of me for Public Works Week. That is going to be May 15th through 21st. We had a special surprise today, and I was super excited to go for my first time to visit the yard. And we had lunch. We had some pizza and sushi. So I want to call up. I'll read a little bit from the proclamation here. National Public Works Week: Ready and Resilient. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Pico Rivera. So that's just one paragraph of the importance that our public works workers do. So I wanted to provide this proclamation on behalf of myself, the mayor, and the city of Pico Rivera. Thank you for all of the hard work that you do. So if we can have the representatives come up. Any public works individuals that would like to come up, as well as directors. Thank you.
Long time no see.
Welcome. Welcome to my house. You're on my side.
Long time no see. No basketball court.
Let's get this bad boy out the way.
Come on in. We have a big group.
Go to the front.
Who do I give this to? Terry? Who shall I give this to? Carlos? Carlos and Terry?
Terry.
Terry, come on over. You're welcome. Tell us where to go. Organize us.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Get back in here, Ray. Aaron.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a presentation regarding Ruben Salazar Joint Use Park Proposal. And I'll pass that over to our Parks Director.
Gabe, will you do the slides for me? Okay, great. Sounds good. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. It's great to be here to present this opportunity to you for... I want to say for a potential joint use, but we're already in a joint use. So I'm just going to let you know the evolution of what we've been working on and what our next steps hopefully will be. So, Gabe, if you can go to the next slide. This is the landscape that we're looking at. This is a current Google Earth picture of the Ruben High School, Ruben Salazar High School landscaping and opportunity. And so what has been happening is with the support of two of our council members, Councilmember Camacho and Councilmember Laura, as well as ERUSD Board Members Mejia and Perez, we have had many ad hoc meetings, and it started out quite small. We'll go to the next slide. You can go to the next slide. Sorry, Gabe. So it started out with a small idea where they wanted to potentially bring two mini footsall courts over to the area. And so the first initial meeting was that discussion, and then the second meeting, they asked me to bring the overlay on to the landscaping. And when you look at it, and when I shared at the meeting, was why are we thinking so small? Why don't we, if we're going to do this, let's go big? You know, why don't we, why don't we really take ownership of the entire space, which we're already doing already, and revitalize and beautify our area and ERUSD's area to make it a complete project that encompasses and connects to the Smith Park? So that's what we did at that meeting. We discussed it. And the city manager, with your support, thank you very much, gave us permission to go ahead and move forward with the design, because you really can't see the vision unless you actually see it on paper and see the design. So I thank Steve Carmona, our city manager, for that support. The next slide, please. So what we did at that point in time, I worked with the designers, the landscape designers, and we talked to some of our stakeholders and our user groups. And we wanted to make sure, from the council's perspective, that we were absolutely designing this park to make sure that nothing was going to be removed. Everything was going to be, all the user groups were going to be satisfied. And in essence, we would only enhance things. We would not take away things. So the design that we pitched at this point in time had four regulation soccer fields, which right now, the green space out there can only do three, so it was an increase. We moved the basketball courts closer to Balfour. We added a parking lot, because parking is a huge problem over at Smith Park. And so we thought, if we're going to be increasing all of these and beautifying this, people will come, and they're going to need places to park. And we put the parking lot in the middle so that families, a lot of the families in Pico Rivera have multiple children. And so they could go to the playground, they could go to the basketball court, or they can go to the soccer areas. So we thought that the parking lot was in a good spot. If you could take it to the next larger. This is the design that we pitched initially. And so then we took it to the next ad hoc meeting, and we got a lot of great feedback at that ad hoc meeting. If you can go to the next slide, Gabe, thank you very much. So at this meeting, the board members, ERUSD Board Members and our city council members gave a lot of great feedback and said, "Look, it's very, it's very heavy soccer use. However, there's no real green space just to sit, just to read. There's no possible, there's no educational opportunities there." They wanted more trees. They wanted to ensure that the storage unit out there for AYSO was kept in place. So we took that feedback, and we went back to the drawing board, and I'll go to the next slide. We came back with all of those changes into a new design. I'll show you. Don't switch yet, Gabe, but in the next slide, you'll see a bigger version of this particular design. And you'll see in the middle that, that section in the middle is completely just green space. But just so everybody knows in the audience, everything in green is only lined with chalk for soccer. But it can be used for festivals. It could be used for educational uses. The school can use it for whatever they would like to use it for when it's not being utilized for soccer. They can line it for whatever they want. So in essence, the entire area in green is fully green space utilized that can be utilized by the public and by the residents. In pink in the middle, which might be a little hard to see, is our educational area. And it will be dedicated. There's an actual estuary out there. There's a lot of ducks that have made their home over at Ruben Salazar High School. And so it was very important to the school and to the high school principal that we kept a little area to keep the ducks safe. So I thought that was really great. We took, we took this final design to a fourth ad hoc meeting that we had many of our stakeholders at. We had El Rancho High School students on the line. We had all three of the Roldan Brothers, Christian, Alex, and Caesar were on the line. We had the athletics director from ER El Rancho High School, pardon me. Of course, we had our council members, Councilmember Laura and Councilmember Camacho, as well as ERUSD Board Members Mejia and Perez. And we also had Dr. Espaza, our superintendent, as well as our city manager, Steve Carmona, on the line. And it was, people loved this. We'll go to the next slide. They loved, they absolutely loved the area. And I want to just note every, so for everybody in the audience and anyone listening, the design also shows a little red route, and that's our current walking path. So our current, we have a walking program. Our seniors just started back up, I believe, this week. And one of the things that they wanted to see was an increased walking path. So we added that into the loop over at the new area, and so it will extend their time. It will extend their walking ability, and I think the community will really enjoy that. The feedback that we got from the Roldan Brothers and from El Rancho High School and the athletic director and the soccer coaches and the children at the high school, or the teens, was that they wanted to make sure that these soccer fields were going to be CIF-regulated sizes. And we have confirmed that all of those spaces, all four potential spaces, because we can still utilize the middle space as a soccer field if we needed to, can all be CIF-regulated. They were very excited about this, because this means they can do tournaments. They can have two games happening at the same time. They can have games happening at the high school as well as happening at Ruben Salazar. They wanted to, Christian Roldan particularly wanted to make sure that there was spaces around the soccer fields for parents to sit. So it wasn't so cramped, and so we made sure that was there. And they also wanted to make sure that the facility would be open for training possibilities, because a lot of times, they say they come home from their games, and there's no one for them to properly train. And so we told them, "Don't worry about that. We'll make sure that when it comes down to programming, that we'll make sure there's programming available for, you know, folks, all residents, of course, ERUSD students first, and then our residents second. And then, of course, you know, for them to come and train, because we want, we want our Pico Rivera land to be their home, our home base." So everyone was pretty darn excited about that. So the next slide is, oh, I'm sorry, next slide, Gabe. So then I went and attended an ERUSD Board Meeting on April 19th, and I presented the same ideas that I'm presenting to you today and to the community. There was some, there are some concerns, of course. Everyone loved the idea. And there was some concerns regarding the space and usage of the space. But what I'm here to tell you and to share with, as I did with ERUSD, we'll go to the next slide, is that we are already in a joint use agreement. On October 8th of 2013, we already established an agreement for shared space of Ruben Salazar High School. We are already utilizing the space for AYSO. We're already sharing very amicably. We're already great partners. And so what I wanted to bring to you today is just a little bit of what's in the current agreement at this time. We are in a 20-year agreement, and we have, we can extend the terms for five years at a time. And Ruben Salazar High School is dedicated already as shared space in Exhibit A in the agreement. So it's very specific. The only thing that we are in need of is if we wanted to move forward with this shared space agreement to do revitalization and renovations, is we need an amendment, which can be a simple letter or a simple agreement that we can craft and they sign, or they can craft and we sign, as long as both parties are mutually agreed upon. If you could go to the next slide. The reason why this is really critical is, of course, you all know this, but Pico Rivera has been on fire getting grant money. We, there is, we are doing a great job going after money, getting it and doing these projects. But there is more money coming down the pike, and there is more money coming down for infrastructure and for parks. But we have to be in a collaborative. So we can't go after the funding for Ruben Salazar High School unless the ERUSD Board Members are in agreement. And so that's why this is really critical, because if we don't do something soon, we might, we might lose an opportunity to go after funding that may go to another city, because they are in agreement to collaborate. So what I wanted to share was, we're already in an agreement. We already have a wonderful partner, and we are already using the space. All we are asking for is for the opportunity to go after the money, to bring the money home to Pico Rivera. The next slide. So the next steps that I have for you, of course, all of you are open to comment on this. And I know, I don't know if Christian Roldan is on the line, but he was trying to get on. I think he might want to comment, and there might be some other folks online. But what the next steps are is, I'm planning to work on this if you would lend me your support, if you would be in agreement to this, so that we could craft a simple letter or an agreement that the attorney would review and that would, that we would present to ERUSD Board, and that we could go after the potential funding for the renovations. Of course, we'll have many meetings down the road about what happens when we build it. You know, but right now, we just need to be in agreement to go after the funding. And so that's my presentation for you tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Director Yugar. This is really exciting. Do you have any comments from the council? Yes, Councilmember Laura.
There's a number of people that I would like to thank. I'd like to thank the mayor for allowing Councilmember Camacho and I to get together and to move this project forward with Pam Yugar. This was a concept that we started to push over dinner. One night, that Councilmember Camacho and I got together, and we were talking, and, you know, he revitalized the project, because I was pushing for the mini pitches. And he said, "You know, let's, let's go back to that. Let's bring that back. Let's try to make that happen." So then I said, "Okay." But I wanted to test the temperature of the other elected officials from El Rancho. So I told Councilmember Camacho, "Well, let's have a small meeting. Just elected officials, and let's have Pam present, who can help us facilitate this meeting." And she listened, and she heard what we wanted, and then she came back and said, "I have, let me put ideas to paper." And Pam really hit it out of the park, right? This, a lot of that, like 90% of that is her. As much as I want to give credit to us, a lot of that is her. So we then went to the school board members, and they love the idea. They do have some concerns, but I think those are readily addressed. And as we've done more research regarding the memorandum of understanding, I think a lot of those concerns are already answered.
Yes.
Just real briefly, just a few other, one more point. I live by that park, and I drive by there every day. And around 7:00 PM, when the sun's going down, there's kids playing soccer. And they're playing soccer in the dark. And their parents are there, sitting there, watching them play soccer in the dark. And they're trying to play by the basketball courts, because that's where the only place for lighting is. And I drive by there, and I just shake my head, and I tell myself, "We need to do better. We can do better." And this is what I think better looks like. We give an actual space, you know, we level off that playing field, because it's not level. And as you know, if you've ever played sports, if you play on an unlevel surface, you're prone for ankle and knee injuries, especially with soccer, right? We put in proper irrigation. We put in lighting, so that these kids can actually play when the sun goes down. So, and what really kind of tipped the scale was the parking lot. I remember, I think, Councilmember Camacho and I, we looked at each other when we saw the parking lot. And we didn't know if that was going to fly with the school board members. But one of the first things they said is they liked the parking lot.
I know.
And when you park on Rosemead, because now I am when I take, when I take my son to for football practice, that's a very treacherous street. When you park and try to get out of your car, those cars are coming around fast. And on a Friday night, that park is packed. You have Dawn's football practice. You have an adult softball league. You have Little League going on. And then you have private soccer practices. And they're waiting at 8:00 PM for Dawn, the Dons, to finish, because then soccer's going to start. So this just adds to our community. It's a beautiful collaboration. This is what happens when our city works together. These are the possibilities. And we're losing 50 to 60% of our park space. So we don't have anywhere to really build out, so we need to look at our existing green space, and we need to improve it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Camacho?
Yes, Mayor, and I just wanted to add to Councilmember Lada's comments. You know, it's been great to be part of this collaboration with the school district. I mean, and before I mention, I actually thank Councilmember Lada for bringing this idea to the forefront. And, you know, ideas, and then a little bit of a planning and execution is what makes these projects work. And we're at this point because of that. You know, we've been collaborating with the school district since the 1960s in so many different ways. And most recently, in 2013, we developed a more concise joint use agreement with all the facilities, both theirs and ours. And as of, what is it, back in 2018, we opened, I believe that the day gets me correct, we opened up Pico Park. It was a passive park, which was amendment to the agreement. Once again, we, the school district, boundaries and the city boundaries are the same. We share the same boundaries. We, in essence, service the same constituency. So for us to be able to collaborate just makes it that much easier. And what this came to be, it was, again, from a small idea to, you know, just a creative mind of Pam and others, and just a willingness from two school board members to collaborate and take this to a whole different level. I think this is the essence of what we do as a collaborative governance here in the city of Pico Rivera. And I think this project can definitely be that signature project of the collaboration. Once again, and as was stated, we don't have the funding for this project. This is not a, this is a major endeavor. But as our Director Yugar mentioned, time is of essence. There is a lot of money out there. And although we've been successful in grants that we've obtained, there's many monies, there's much more funding out there. And when we have trouble already projects with this MOU, I know, and I'm optimistic that we can get them. So if we can come, I know the school district, after their presentation, they're doing their due diligence as it relates to their agreement, what it consists of. You know, as a, as a father of three girls who have been in AYSO since now my oldest, 23, to my little one, I've been in that whole area, and it needs enhancement. We're not displacing anyone. There's a lot of injuries that happen because of the fields. No fault to anyone, but if this is an opportunity for us to enhance and provide that soccer space that we didn't provide when we built our parks a few years back, I think this is a great opportunity, a great collaboration. I think we should move forward aggressively to seek these funds. And hopefully, we can develop this agreement between El Rancho and the New York School District and the city of Pico Rivera.
Great. Do we have any of the Roldan family on the line? If they're waiting, can we have them speak? If not, we can wait till the public comment, if they were calling in later. So, Gabe, or whoever's behind, let us know if any one of them call in, so we can let them speak on this project as well. Thank you. Thank you so much. And let's move on with the next presentation. The, we have regarding a dog park site proposal. That is also our director. We've been keeping her very busy, if you don't, if you can't tell.
Woof. I have to change my mind, because I have to go from soccer to doggies. Great. Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you very much for this opportunity to talk to you about where we're at with our dog park. So I want to thank, this ad hoc committee was started by our Mayor Pro Tem Lutz in 2021. So we've been working on this project for a good year now. And what we did was, we started looking at research potential for dog parks. And then our Councilmember Camacho brought to us in the ad hoc committee that he wanted to make us a pet-friendly city. So we wanted to go after certification to be a pet-friendly city. But in order to do that, you really need a dog park. So they, they worked hand in hand. So, Gabe, if you can go to the next slide. So we just really started meeting. We met with Siaka in the beginning as well. And we had a few interested residents who were really dog lovers and very interested. If you could go to the next slide, Gabe. Thanks. So we started out looking at what would it take to become a pet-friendly city. And so we really needed, of course, one, to focus on getting a dog park, working on policies that would make doggies friendly, like allowed to come into, not come into businesses, but be allowed maybe outside of restaurants and think different things on patios. And also, we needed to make sure that we had a shelter, and Siaka, our relationship and partnership with Siaka, it counts. So that's fantastic. The next slide, please, Gabe. Because this is such an important, I would say, an important infrastructure improvement for the city council, you dedicated $1.5 million to this cause. And so we've been looking diligently for, for either to acquire land, excuse me, or to find land that we have already that can be utilized. So if you could go to the next slide. So we've, we've looked at many, many options. This was one of my favorites from the beginning, and it arose to the occasion at the end. It's Rosemead and Gallatin. And why this is very attractive is, we own it. And it is already a beautiful little spot, if you've ever been there. It's in a residential area by Gallatin, and it's also the entryway to the city. So if you can go to the next slide. So I need to give kudos to my colleague Javier Hernandez, because I'm, of course, a dog advocate. But he had this brilliant idea of bringing the Alabrije's ideas to, to our city. And so this new dog park that we're going to be bringing will have a theme, like many, like in Coco, in like the movie Coco. And so it will be vibrant. It will be gorgeous. We will have statues. And it also is going to be next to the new entryway for that, for that side of the city. So it will really change the landscaping of the corner, the vibrancy of coming into Pico Rivera. It's really going to be very, quite outstanding, if you can go to the next slide.
This is really exciting. I'll comment really quickly. And the Alabrije idea came from, it's a mythical creature, it's very rooted in Mexican culture. And so similar on Coco, the dog Dante. So usually, it's a winged creature, a cat, or a dog, or something that has wing-like creatures, very colorful. And so this is very rooted in Mexican culture and playful children's culture as well. So we're really excited about that.
I'm so glad. I'm so glad. Javier, Director Hernandez, or Mr. Hernandez, brilliant idea. Just really brilliant. I love it so much. But, so we've been working together. Does it, even the designers were like, "This is one of the best dog parks they've ever designed." The whole theme, they just absolutely loved it, and they can't wait for the RFP or the RFQ to come out, so they can bid on it. But the park plan will have, it's not, it will be a regional park. It will also be a bike education and training park, and it will also have community-based artwork. And I'm not sure, Javier, if you would like to talk a little bit about your connection with Huac.
Yeah, so, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity. Early on in the brainstorming of this overall project, when we were evaluating a number of different sites, we were looking at sites also along the San Gabriel River, the Rio Hondo. And we just kind of dawned on us that this serves multiple purposes, because as we're looking at the San Gabriel River revitalization, we were looking at reestablishing... because as we're looking at the San Gabriel River revitalization, we were looking at reestablishing, uh, wildlife refuges, um, throughout the corridor. Uh, but it was very difficult to do that. So anyhow, um, we came up with this idea, uh, to embrace the wildlife in our local community here, right? We're, the, the location that's, that we've identified is immediately south of the Woodyar Narrows Dam, which is also the Woodyar Narrows Recreation Area or the Flood Basin, which also serves as a wild, wildlife refuge, where houses coyotes, owls, uh, hawks, and a number of other things. So speaking to, uh, the fantastical animals that Alabrihe has kind of embody, the ideas that, um, Alabrihe, the term itself, uh, actually means, uh, spiritual animal, or, excuse me, an animal spirit guide, which is basically the man's best friend, right, the dog. So when we felt that it was a good idea, we actually reached out to Jaco, Jacobo y Maria Angeles Taller, which is the, uh, workshop in the city of Oaxaca that actually inspired the movie Coco, and has gone off to do a, a number of different things, uh, with a number of different partners all throughout the world. And we've basically reached out to them to see whether or not they would be interested in partnering with the city of Pico Rivera to help us design this park and maybe dedicate some monuments, um, and some statues, or some kind of a large-scale Alabrihe that would serve as a welcoming point to, into the city. And they overwhelmingly expressed strong interest, actually a high level of excitement. And so one of the things that we also talked about too is that we've also have, in many occasions, have, especially more recently with the, the, the Bell, uh, have exercised, uh, our relationships through the Sister Cities Association. We felt maybe this might be a good opportunity to exercise that yet again. Of course, we haven't, uh, introduced any level of commitment, and that's obviously to the decision of, uh, the council, but it also kind of ties in timely with the reconsideration of establishing the Sister City Commission as well. So maybe something that we can bring to, uh, for discussion at that, uh, commission as well, so. But, um, there's a number of, uh, of players in, uh, Oaxaca, uh, who are very excited to partner with the city of Pico Rivera, if indeed we decide to take that approach. But, um, nevertheless, um, we have a, a strong Mexican-American culture here in, uh, Pico Rivera, and we felt that this would be a good fit.
Perfect. So if you can go to the next slide, it just showcases a little bit of, thank you Javier for that. Gabe, can you go to the next slide? Thank you so much. So that would be kind of the idea, that, that Alabrihe is one, um, that is in the Rockefeller Center that was donated. And so, um, Javier is working his magic to try to get one donated for us as well, and I'm sure that he will come through with that. And then, of course, the bike station and the little things dedicated to the doggies. So we are working on this, and we thank you for dedicating the ARPA funding so that we can go after this. We will be going out for an R F Q., R F P. in the upcoming weeks, and we hope to have a groundbreaking for you in winter twenty-two or twenty-three.
Wonderful, thank you.
Sure.
Yes, Councilmember Camacho?
Uh, thank you, Director Yugar. Once again, it's been, uh, been excited to work on this project from its inception. Um, you know, I, we, we got it to this far through, because of the support of the city council, but I want to make clear and, and, um, recognize someone from the community who actually brought this to, uh, from its idea to, to try to convince us, I, I want to say since two thousand seventeen, possibly. And we have Henado Moreno, who's here in the audience, I just want to acknowledge him. I, I've never been, met someone's, I mean, I'm a pet lover, I adopted my dog from Siaka. I know a lot of pet lovers, but someone that's so passionate that goes out of his way to do activities throughout the years for cats, for dogs, and partners, above and beyond what Siaka does. And as a board member of Siaka, you know, there's, I've been around a lot of activities related to, uh, the servicing of pets and adoptions and so forth. And, and Henado brought this to the idea, and it's great that this comes directly from the community. The community has been asking for a dog park for many years throughout the city. Um, and for us to get to this point, uh, initially with Councilmember Lutz, we met, we discussed the variety of options and, and locations, but the limitations, whether it was Edison Properties, uh, Arantxa Unified School District properties. I think at the end of the day, having, you know, uh, working with the property that we own and we control, made it that much more viable for us to make this happen. And then, you know, Councilmember Lotta joined us in this committees through the infrastructure and added, uh, to that endpoint. And, and to support the mayor and the entire city council, we were able to allocate those one point five million dollars of ARPA funds that is going there. So to be able to bring a community-led effort, uh, to bring something to our city that was in high demand for many years, and be able to now be at the stage of potential design and support and moving this forward. Neighbor cities, Woodyar, Downey, they have a dog park, we've looked at their concepts, we looked at their designs. But I think this will be, uh, relevant, and if we go even with that theme, uh, I think it'll be a unique pet, uh, uh, dog park that, um, would be not only, uh, provided services to the community as far as taking your dogs, both small and large animals on both areas, but as was mentioned, it's an entrance to our city. So I think that would capture the many other activities that are happening along Gallatin, Rosemead, and, and, uh, would be, uh, a great addition to, to our city. So thank you to the city council that we're at this point, and thank you, Director Yugar, for continuing to bring us, you know, creative ideas here. Javier, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, did you want to say something?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to address the public, the residents of Pico Rivera. We're all pretty much, I would say, a pet-friendly city, but we're looking forward to get that certification. And, and I wanted to just clarify, the funding is there for this dog park. The dog park is gonna happen. The dog park is gonna be in the entrance of our community, so people coming down from the city of Alman, South Almani, they're gonna see this wonderfully theme park-style dog park for small dogs and large dogs. And I remember when I, when I ran for city council, I said, one of the goals that I have is I'm gonna get a dog park in the city. So back in two thousand twenty-one, when I met with the, uh, the city manager and I met with him at Rivera Park, I said, what do you think? Rivera Park has an open space, why don't we do it here? And he said, well, very cautiously optimistic, he said, let's explore this idea. Well, here we are, year and a half later or so, and we have a dog park with funding. We have a location that's owned by the city, and we have a wonderfully creative staff. And then, of course, we have a council that is all in agreement to get that funding. I'm, I'm just so happy that we're, we're a rock star city, we're doing great things. We're doing great things for the community, and we're not done. We're not done. So I'm very proud of this effort that was, uh, commenced, and we're gonna reach the finish line in about a year. So thank, thank you to all the community members. I feel so proud. Now I gotta come up with some new, new goals. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to bring up as well, for the residents that don't know, um, the Pam, our Parks Director, brought up Siaka. Siaka is our southeast area animal control authority. Councilmember Camacho is our city representative. They are our animal control, um, when there's any issues with pets, adoptions, as well as licensing. Um, so that is the, the, the place that you called. You could also call City Hall, but they're the ones that, that you call out. And, and Councilmember Camacho has actually been wa, working on this, um, when you were a council member, and I was on the Parks Commission in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. And as we mentioned, we had ideas, but lack of funds, and then COVID hit. And now we have grants and additional ARPA funds, and, and we have a council in agreement. We all got to vote on it. We ranked our top choices, which included the swimming pool and the dog park. And it's great to be working as a team and moving forward and getting so many things done. So thank you so much, and, and of course, our residents advocating for it, so, and a great Parks Director to help us, um, bring us all together. So thank you so much for all of that. Um, but let's move on. Um, City Manager, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, uh, Mayor, um, City Council, we have a, a walk-on item. I'll refer to it as seven point five. Uh, it's on your, uh, dais. Uh, this is to authorize California Choice Energy Authority to enter into a long-term resource adequacy agreement with Santa Pola Energy Storage, L A L C. on behalf of Pico Rivera Innovative Municipal Energy.
And Madam Mayor, we also have one additional item for closed session that we'd like to add. We can have one motion to incorporate both of these items, uh, the one that, uh, the city managers, city manager just mentioned. And there's one additional item for closed session, uh, under Conference of Legal Counsel, Anticipate Litigation Pursuant Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D two. And on that item, on both of those items, we would need a motion to add those items, inasmuch as they came up after the posting of the agenda. And there's a needy need, immediate need to have the council either provide direction or take action on those items. We need a motion of that effect.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Any abstention? None? Okay, thank you. Let's move on to our public hearing.
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, we have one public hearing this evening. This is a public hearing to consider the approval of a resolution amending the schedule of user fees for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. Sir, City Manager's report, uh, the staff stands ready to answer any questions the council may have. Uh, would be appropriate to open the public hearing and determine if there's any public comment on this item.
Do we have any public comment from, regarding this matter?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
And thank you.
And then if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council, we have no speaker cards, is that correct? So it'd be appropriate to close the public hearing.
Okay, close the public hearing.
And then it comes up to the council level.
Yes, do we have any comments from the council?
I just have one comment. Um, I know that we do need to, um, the only, we, we charge minimal as a, a cost recovery. However, I did receive some comments from residents that have multiple children. Um, so let's say they're gonna enroll their child in summer camp, but there are a brother and a sister, and they have three children. Um, so potentially for the future, if we could look into, um, discounts, uh, larger family discount rates or something of that nature. Um, I know it's not in, in this current proposal, but looking into how we can help to, um, to support the families that maybe are a lower income or have larger families for the future. So I think, um, our Parks Director might already have some plans for that in the works, which I haven't gotten opportunity, but I did want to mention that. Um, I did receive comments from some residents, I, and, and we are working on that, to address that for some of our families. And, and, um, and do I have a motion to approve that item?
From the council.
Motion to approve?
Okay, second?
I make a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion is unanimous. Item passes, and let's go on to item number. Let's go on to our, oh. What do we have now? I'm sorry, public comment. We have, uh, individuals here in person to speak. First, I have, um, I don't have a name on this one, city clerk. Let's, I'm gonna go to Jerry, um, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name. Jerry. Goianaga. Jerry Goianaga regarding the green spaces.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Gary Goianaga. I'm the Athletic Director at Arantxa High School. I just want to be clear that I'm speaking on my behalf, obviously not on behalf of the district or, or my school. Um, but as someone who was involved in, uh, some of these ad hoc meetings, um, but also as a coach, and then as a resident of Pico Rivera, a student of Pico Rivera, um, I do believe that our constituents are one and the same. Um, E R U S D. serves the children of Pico Rivera, and you guys as our officiating body do the same. Um, so I hope that this is a project that can take place. As we currently stand, um, our soccer programs, our boys' and girls' teams have already used Smith Park. Um, we usually play our league soccer games there, um, we've played playoff games there in the past. Um, and what I see is that those moments offer an opportunity to bridge, um, our high school students who are playing for, for our Arantxa teams, and it allows our community teams from A Y S O. and from just the different parks to be able to highlight and see what is happening, um, and can give kids an opportunity to look forward, um, towards the future. Um, in terms of what was said earlier, um, by the director, um, there were kids involved in these meetings, so I, I want to highlight that they've been taken into account. Um, we have some projects happening at Arantxa High School as well. Um, but with the run-of-the-mill and how C I F. is now and how competitive sports are, we basically have our teams training year-round. Um, so anything that can be revitalized, anything that can be improved, um, that's gonna allow spaces for our children to, to play, um, I want to fully endorse, um, and, and I just want to, just wanted to speak on behalf of that. And like, uh, in the same, in the same intention or in the same breadth of the Roaldon family, who are very interested in giving back to the community, um, and investing in the community that they came from, um, I want to do the same. So that's all I have for you guys this afternoon. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, and thank you for serving on our ad hoc. That's volunteer. This is all volunteer, all these evening meetings, right? Next, we have Rosie Glover regarding the trench on Rosemeat Boulevard.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, I've lived, I live on Rosemeat Boulevard where the trench was dug up, um, between Beverly Boulevard, Beverly Road and Gallatin. It was about over ten years ago, it was dug up. And the way that, I guess, the groundsmen cut the concrete, and they went back and put asphalt on top of it where it sinks, and these huge semi trucks go across Rosemeat Boulevard throughout the day, evening, nights, and it's just a constant thr, thr, thumping and vibration. It's to the point where I can't have picture frames up on my walls because it falls. I have cracks in my home with the door frames all around the walls, the corners. I got tile falling off my house already. I got grout falling. Now I have major plumbing issues because of the vibration and the thumping that's happening. I'm spending several hundred thousands of dollars trying to fix. And I'm also a vice president in my association where we live, we have forty condos. And it has been very destructive where our fence, brick fence around our community is falling. Cracks are everywhere. Our sprinklers have been busted, our, it's just, everything is just deteriorating little by little. So, um, I'm just here just to let you guys know that it needs to be done correctly. It was done a couple months ago, back in February, but they did it wrong. And what they did was it went from a foot to five feet now. And the trucks just keep coming, and throughout the night, especially two, three, four in the morning, it's thumping. It's really bad. It's, I can't even tell if it's an earthquake or it's the trucks that go by on Rosemeat Boulevard. So I just, we just need that road fixed and repaired, because I need, I need sleep. I, it's, it's horrible. I mean, we've had, uh, several homeowners that have come in the past and offered to you guys, stay at our home. You guys can feel it and hear it. I mean, I'm more than welcome to open my doors to any of you guys, if you guys want to come over for dinner, have a couple drinks, or whatever you guys want to do. Just to hear the thumping and to feel it, it's, it's, it's bad. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. We have, you're fortunate, we have our Public Works Director here this evening. Um, and if you can, please, uh, give us an update, and as well as the resident, reach out to her, um, regarding any repairs in that area. Thank you. We also have Henado Moreno regarding the dog park site proposal.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of city council. My name is Henado Moreno. My wife and I are, are residents of the city of Pico Rivera. We are founders of the Angeles Wings Nonprofit who advocates, rescues, fosters cats and dogs in our city, all volunteer-based. We are also creators of the City of Pico Rivera Dog Park Tax Team Page. Our goal is to make the city of Pico Rivera one of the top pet-friendly cities in the, in the county. Today, I'm here to represent a large majority of the over seven thousand-plus registered dog owners in our city that are made of veterans, senior citizens, hard-working individuals, and many more residents that are in favor of having a dog park constructed in our city. So I thank you today for your support to get this project moving forward. A dog park not only brings prestige to our city, but it also helps with the physical and mental health of dogs, including their owners. But it also brings positive direct and indirect financial revenue to our city. People tend to forget that for many residents, a dog is, is family, and to some, it's all they have. So having a space in the city where they can enjoy time with their dogs and much more is priceless. Finally, I'd like to thank, um, our city council member, Mr. Camacho, in behalf of our pet community, and your leadership and your attentiveness of helping us with this journey. This journey didn't start yesterday, this, this year or last. This journey started about five years ago, when Mr. Camacho took time of his busiest case, schedule to meet with us and listen to us about our vision of a dog park. Ever since, he has been helping us with his vision and many more visions pertaining to animal safety and animal rescue. For that, our, our animal community and our community is very grateful and supportive of Mr. Camacho for your compassion that you have for the voiceless. I would also like to thank our city staff and every other city council member, person that is, that has recently joined this journey for their help and their support. recently joined this journey for their help and their support. A city who cares about the voiceless is a city who truly cares. Thank you for your time, your support. Let's get this park built. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeffrey Natke. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. For those that don't know me, it's been many years since I've spoken to you, but I'm Jeffrey Natke, Attorney General Manager with City Employees Associates that provides labor representation services to the mid managers, professionals, and confidential employees association. I'm here to speak tonight about how disappointed the staff are in the proposed city manager's contract. It's not to say he's not a good man, or he's not hardworking, but 40% over three years, when the staff have been on the front lines of the pandemic, working directly with the community, gone without raises. The last raise was July of 2019, nothing in 2020, nothing in 2021. And all the city's offering is 2.5%, you know, annual raises for the staff, but yet there's enough money to give a 40% increase to one man. One man doesn't create the success of the city. It's all of the staff working together to achieve all of these accomplishments. It's not a good reflection on the city, and it's not consistent with the values of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joanna Rosas regarding Beverly Hospital.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that Beverly Hospital, more and more people have been coming to my husband and I regarding misdiagnosis, people just being sent away. I'm kind of emotional right now because a few months ago, my daughter was diagnosed with womb tumor. So she has cancer. She's only 19 months old. I took her to Beverly Hospital. She was misdiagnosed, sent away, just that she had a fever, flu, it'll go away. The next day, she was still not good. I took her to Presbyterian. Within 45 minutes, she was diagnosed that she had a tumor in her stomach. So I just don't want another family to go through what we went through. Now, I know, two weeks after that, she fainted on us. We had to call 911. The Sheriff's Department, amazing, they responded within, it felt like seconds. They got there so quick before I would even was able to put on my pants or my slippers or whatever. They were at my door, which was amazing. But the ambulance wanted to take her to Beverly Hospital. And after fighting with them, going back and forth, back and forth, no, 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 we don't want her to go there. We want her to go to Chalk, because that's where she's been taken care of from the moment we found out that she had a tumor. They told us that they couldn't take her. So we were going back and forth, back and forth. And I just want something to be done that the ambulance are able to take your child to their proper location that you want them to take. I don't know how it can be done, if there's anything that can be done, but also look into Beverly Hospital, because I don't want another family member, another family to go through what we've been through. It's been, more and more people are coming to my husband and I telling us their stories, that they've also been chewed away, you know, just, we just want it to be looked into. I don't know if I'm speaking correctly. I'm just like speaking out of my heart. But, and my husband can speak better than I can right now. So if there's anything that you guys can do to help our community, because that is our community hospital, we do run there for emergencies, and it's just more and more people are coming out saying more and more things about Beverly Hospital.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. I know that we don't exactly have jurisdiction over that, but we're fortunate to have a nurse here from PIH. One thing that I, I know my son has, we have PIH health insurance, and I noticed that we don't have any clinics or, or anything from other medical facilities to help service our children. And maybe that's something we can work with our, our Director of Economic Development to bring in medical facilities for children from other organizations that can provide services to our community. Seems like it's a need. Other than that, I, I open up to my, my colleagues to come up with other ideas to support.
So I'm a critical care nurse, and at one point I was an emergency room nurse. And with that, I was a mobile intensive care nurse. So every time the paramedics, when they respond to your home, they call what we say is a base station, and I would answer the call, and I'd give direction to the paramedics, and we would assign them where to go. I can tell you that that's based upon LA County EMS guidelines. So this area, typically you'll go to Beverly Hospital, depending upon what type of illness you have. If it's a stroke, or if it's a heart attack, you'll probably go to PIH, just because they're a comprehensive stroke center, and they're a STEMI center. They can do some really innovative therapies to try to bring you or your loved one back to normal health. You know, but it varies, though. The closest hospital is Beverly Hospital. So if your loved one is having a heart attack, or if they're in cardiac arrest, or if there's an airway issue, they need to go to the nearest, because they need to see a physician ASAP. However, there are some complaints where you do have some time. Like your daughter fainted, she probably had an airway, she was probably breathing. So at that point in time, then you demand that you want to go to PIH Hospital. And I say that not as an employee, but I say that as someone who just, I've been on that call, and I've, I've heard, I know what can be done, and just say, no, all my daughter's physicians are there. That's where she's diagnosed. We demand that she goes there. And with a little persistence, you'd be surprised how far that goes, because we can make exceptions. But then keep in mind that we, we close to ED saturation, too. We get inundated with patients and whatnot, where we can't necessarily accept new ones. We will accept emergencies always. So there's a lot of caveats to that. My best wishes to your daughter and to you as a family. My mom, my father, and my sister have had cancer, so, and they were adults. This is your child. I pray, I think the council sentiment is that we wish you the very best for your daughter. And please, come back. Let us know how she's doing. Okay? She's a member of our community, and we hope that her treatment goes well. And there's a lot of good therapies out there. She's at a good place, Chalk. Okay? There's some amazing doctors, amazing therapies. Let's see, we'll, we'll cross our fingers, and we'll, we'll pray as a community for you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have your phone number as well, so we can, we can see if we can get some resources, if there's other support groups in Pico Rivera of parents that are going through similar things, perhaps we can connect with those. Next, we have Mario Rosas regarding the dog park.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I never had the time to come introduce myself properly. Excuse my English. It's my, my first language is Spanish, so I will try to be there as much as clear as I can, okay? So I'm right now, right now have a mixed emotions because of my wife and all this. Oh, you have no idea how deep that thing is. I agree with you everything about Beverly Hospital, but there is so much more. People is dying. That's why we need to do something. We don't need people to keep dying there. I want to leave that, that to the side, because I want to focus on one thing, on one thing only, okay? So a few of you members know me already. Some people know me here as a mechanic, because I have my shop on Beverly Boulevard, on Rosemead Boulevard, in the gas station. Thanks to that thing that happened on the road construction, that's how I came and I met a few of you. My neighbors send their regards to you, Mr. Camacho, for everything that you've been interacting with us. They send their support for you, Ms. Monica, because they believe in you so much. Like, I, like, I've been, I was telling some of the members, the, all days are done. People now start talking. My neighbors come and talk. They, I don't know if they see a leader in me, which is, I don't feel like I am, but they come and talk, and talk things to me a lot. I have many things on my head. But right now, I'm going to focus on the dog park. Okay. Mr. Luz, I have to be very direct to you, okay? Because I'm not trying to expose you, but I, I like his words. We are a team. Residents and all the city hope we are a team. I'm not against of any member here. I'm not looking for anybody to be my enemy or anything like that. But those words, the ones you told me about for me to look another city to live on, or to move my business, it hurt me really bad. All those things that you accuse me that I've been misinforming my people, I do know that, sir. For all the things like living down the side, I want to like, really like tell you about my neighbors on my corner, where I, where I live on. Everybody wants to work with the city. Everybody's willing to do something for the city to become better. Okay? It's like a, a thing that we need to learn from you guys. Right now, we're here to support Henaro Moreno, and Henaro Moreno only. Also can be Mr. Camacho there, but the only one who started with this project is Mr. Moreno, and with the support of Mr. Camacho. Nobody else. No, you, sir, nobody else, just him. Okay? The community supporting him and him only. I have a mess of feelings. I, I didn't have the time to tell you so many other things. But we need to start talking as a team. You guys need to stop attacking each other. You guys are a team that you're representing us. Put an example, a good example for us to follow. People is tired, people is weak, people is in need of so much thing. We need to see you guys as a leader. Please set that example for us, and we are willing to help. And I would like to, for you guys to follow everything, and please give us an idea, what as a residents can we do for the city? And please don't forget about the Beverly Hospital, because everything is important, but that, the health thing is more important than anything else. Thank you. My time is up.
Thank you, Mario. And just what you're doing today, we, we like to hear what things we need to fix, but also, we don't always know the answers of how to fix or what's the best solutions. So we love to hear those ideas and suggestions, too, just as, as Henaro did. He said this is something we think would be great for the city, and, and, you know, we try to make it happen, but it does take time, right? So let's move on with our agenda.
Madam Mayor, the one card or the one request which did not have a name, it'd probably be appropriate just to ask that person's-
Okay, there was an individual that filled out a card regarding noise-
From Iguana and El Petrogal.
But there was no name on it. If you can come up and please share your name. Thank you.
My name is Christopher Rowland. I reside in Downey. I'm on the corner of where Starbucks is in Rosemead and Lakewood. This has gone back to 2017. It's been almost six years that the Iguana and El Petrogal's music is just beyond words. Sheriff's Department, they know me by name. They know you guys don't work on Fridays, or Friday nights. They know you don't work on Saturday nights. They know you don't work on Sunday nights. They turn their music up as loud as they want. Last Saturday, I had to call the sheriffs three times, because my walls were vibrating. I'm a nurse, ICU nurse, two years of the pandemic. How am I supposed to rest? They know you guys aren't going to do anything. You guys make money from them. They do what they want. I don't know what else to do besides get legal counsel. It's got to stop. These places are near neighborhoods. I understand they were there before the neighborhoods, but now we're there. Work with us. Iguana, back during the NFL playoffs, I could hear their TVs from my driveway. Would you want that near your houses? I'm just asking for somebody to do something. I have been dealing with code enforcement, city managers, sheriffs, since 2017. Nothing has been done. If you fine them $1,000, they make $20,000 in one night. What's $1,000 fine to them? Nothing. Sheriff's Department's getting tired of me calling. I'm going to keep calling until somebody does something. I'm a citizen just like you. They say, oh, we have a permit to play music. Great, but you don't have a permit to disturb my peace. And I keep telling them that. El Petrogal has their front door open straight to the corner. They have 20 doors in that place. Why do they have to have those front doors pointing at the intersection? It's a fire hazard. You have 20 doors. Why can't they open one of the other doors? Why can't their music be turned down at 10 o'clock? Like, if I had a house party at my house, guarantee the sheriffs would be at my house at 10 o'clock telling me to turn the music down. But they get away with it? Why? Because they're a business? It's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Do we have any public comment via Zoom? Thank you. Let's have the first speaker on Zoom. First speaker, we have Jose Sanchez.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, Jose Sanchez, Mayor, council members. At the April 12 council meeting, the Public Works interim director, Regrieg, said that the fiber after work on Rosemead Boulevard will be complete, and the payment will be started in about three weeks. An excuse for not doing a temporary repair to provide my community and I relief from the damaging pounding of vibration emanating from the trench, failed repair, and nothing yet. But worse, the interim director said the payment will be ground and overlay, and that will complete the project. My question is, then what? On December 2019, the northbound lanes were ground and overlay 30 feet on center as a temporary repair without addressing the, the bridge concrete. A half measure since the southbound lanes were not touched. And so there was no relief from the pounding of vibration, and that work started to decay within weeks. In December of 2021, even after cautioning the interim director that the planned trench repair under CIP 5038 had been previously rejected, they proceeded to do it anyways. That repair was also overlaid, and that not lasted even a day, because under the overlay was more asphalt. Then in February 22, 2022, Public Works reworked the December 2021 patch repair with a bastardized version of CIP 5041, and finished it with an overlay. That lasted about a week or so, and the pounding of vibration returned. That is three times since 2019 only that there had been an overlay done over a trench that has not been properly repaired, that soon decayed, resulting in more damaging, worse severe pounding of vibration. Now the interim director says the payment will be overlaid, and that will complete the project. That overlay does nothing to fix the trench. That is insane. How much more, how much more damage there is under the overlay is unknown, and that has been, has not been addressed. You know, like the great Albert Einstein said, insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, and expecting different results. So my question for the city manager, the city council, the mayor, after this planned payment overlay decays again, what then? What will this, what will it take for this municipality to do the right thing? Because my home is getting destroyed, and so is my neighbor's home is getting destroyed by the pounding of vibration, and it's not being fixed properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Samantha Labitan.
Hi, sorry, I'm not here for public comment. I'm a consultant.
Thank you. That's it? Okay. I do have one more in person. We have school board member Esther Mahia. She was a member of the ad hoc regarding the park space, if you'd like to speak on, on that issue. Thank you for coming in today.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. I have sincere apologies for being late. So I'm here as a resident, as a past AYSO coach, as a past AYSO mom. I'm just here to show my support for the green spaces at Salazar. The, the possibilities are endless. I mean, the increase of mental health for our residents, active lifestyles that will be promoted for all ages, and the increase in the urban canopy. I mean, and I could go on and on, just as the, as to the benefits that this would be provided. Also, just to continue to do that good work between the city and the district. So I'm looking forward to that continued partnership and the possibility of making this green space a reality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Could we also get school board member Arlene Perez, who just-
Sure.
She was-
School board member, would you like to speak as well, public comment? Right on time for our last public comment speaker.
Thank you. Sorry-
The collaboration with the city and the board, I think, is amazing. And I'm sure your colleagues talked about the students are the most excited and that's, to me, speaks volume. They're excited to see soccer, they're excited to find green space, um, some of the educate, the educational opportunities that we'll have, especially to learn, you know, outside, given like what Esther was saying, the mental health, um, the fact that we can utilize the space. I know a lot of us, you know, AYSO plays on there, um, and some of it is guarded and our community members want to use it. And the the board is excited to work with the city and to really, really utilize it. So I'm excited. Thank you to, um, council member Laura Camacho-Pam. I don't know where she's at. Thank you. There you, um, the presentation, everything they've done and and we're excited. We're excited to work with you. We're on the same page as you and just to bring this to Pico Rivera. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in this evening. Thank you. So next on our agenda, we have our consent calendar agenda items number two through 14. Do I have a motion to approve these items?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Um, all in favor. Uh, can we get a roll call vote on these ones?
Um, if I, if I may, I'd actually would would like to pull item number eight, um, if possible. It's something I do plan on voting on, but I think it's something that we should comment on. Uh, I've received multiple messages. Uh, that's my personal reflection. If the council disagrees, then I'm happy to vote on all these items.
Okay. Do you have a subsequent motion to approve item number one through, number one through 14 minus number eight?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second on that one?
Actually, Mayor, I think 14 is on the regular agenda. So it's one through 13, except for eight.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have a second on that one?
Second.
Okay.
Council member Elias.
Yeah.
Council member Camacho.
Yes.
Council member Laura.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lutz.
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So we would like to have a discussion on item number eight.
And actually, Madam Mayor, before the council addresses that, just so that we are compliant with the new provisions of the Brown Act, uh, before you is the consideration of the city manager's contract is provided direction, uh, to my office. And yeah, there's been a number of meetings, appropriate meetings, uh, on the performance evaluation. The, uh, the contract with the, that's being proposed this evening does provide for, um, a salary adjustment as indicated in the contract, uh, of, uh, that would be $260,000 and then also some performance considerations if the city manager achieves those, uh, those goals that has been defined by the city council. With that, that concludes my report and it's to the council over for discussion.
Thank you. Council member Laura.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for giving time on this item. I think it's important. Um, I wanted to express myself because I know that there was a number of employees that have have concerns and I'm sure, you know, those concerns deserve at least my understanding of why I will be voting for this contract extension. Um, it's a two-year extension for Steve Carmona. Um, what, what we did in our discussions is that we took a look at what surrounding city managers were being paid. Um, he was currently at that time being paid 240,000. The average or market price for a city manager of a city our size and a surrounding areas was 260. That was the average. So we felt that Mr. Carmona at least deserved, if he was going to get an extension, he deserves market rate. Not only do we do this for city managers, but we do this for all employees. We take a look at what market rate is and then we try to increase salaries based upon that to just be fair. But I get it. Sometimes that doesn't happen as fast or as soon as people would like. I know with my job, we like market rate, but sometimes that just doesn't happen. So, you know, either you go somewhere else. As a nurse, I can go and work somewhere else or I can just wait. I like my hospital and there's other benefits why I stay there. Um, so that was the reason why we, why we increased, um, his base salary. So then there was another discussion about how do we incentivize it? Because there are a number of, and and I want to backtrack. I want to backtrack with what I just said. I didn't mean to say that if you're a city employee to go work somewhere else. No, no. We value you. Our goal is to bring market rate. I said that of myself, how I view my working conditions and what I'm paid. This is not a reflection of what I think city employees are. I don't want that to be misunderstood. Um, then we talked about how do we incentivize someone to get projects done? And this is my personal perspective of this city and this is why I ran for city council. This city is really good at getting grant money. But it does, in my opinion, in the past, there's been what I would account as poor execution of that grant money. Poor execution at the project level, not the staff level, but at the project level. And I've had these discussions with directors, I've had this discussion with staff, so I feel confident in what I'm saying because these are things that have been verified, that have verified my concerns. So we talked about how do we incentivize that? And in the back of the contract, there's a number of tasks. If you look at the contract, each year his base salary is 260, market rate. Each year he has the opportunity of making an additional $40,000 if he completes all those projects for that year. One of the projects that I feel very strongly about is Mines Avenue. That was a project that was pitched to this community over eight years ago, right? It hasn't been done. I want to see that done. We have the funding for it. So in order for him to make that extra money, he needs to try to get that project going. And at the root of it, I know we look at it and I know it's a $40,000, but at the root of it, it improves our community. Right? At the root of it, these are projects that improve our residents' quality of life. That was one project I put forward. Some of my other colleagues talked about median beautification, Woodyard Boulevard, Rosemead, Beverly Boulevard, San Gabriel Parkway. These medians have been dirt for about 10 years. And I take responsibility, the council takes responsibility for that, not the city employees. That's not your job. Our job is to make sure that our city looks beautiful. You know, I subscribe to the belief of broken windows. And I get it, that's typically applied to policing. But in the theory of broken windows, as a city council member, you actually have to go out and fix broken windows. We have to fix our medians. We have to fix our streets, not tomorrow, not a week from now, but now. So this was a unique way, and I don't believe the city's ever done it this way before, of creating benchmarks, right? And allowing the city manager to try to meet, meet those benchmarks. And in this system, if you meet benchmarks, then you get a bonus. And that's the way we structured the contract. If he doesn't meet those benchmarks, he doesn't get that money. And it's a two-year contract. So I just thought that the employees, and I think that the community just needed to hear from me why I will be voting for this extension. And lastly, you know, I started last year as a, as a city council member, this is my second year. Um, there was a rocky relationship at the beginning. I'll just be very frank and very honest, and that was very clear if you saw some of the past meetings, right? But it's not about me. It's about this city and it's about moving these projects forward. And we actually put several obstacles in front of, not obstacles, but several challenges in front of the city manager. And one of those things was improving our medians. And you know what he did, him and his staff? They went out and they got an $8 million grant to do that. He accomplished that within the first year. Our community, they're actively paving for fiber optic cable. I don't know of any other community in our area that has that. And I think that was his project. That wasn't us. And I can go down the line, you know, our PFAS water filtration, he saw to it that we have full funding with that. So as much as we butted heads at the beginning, at the end of the day, I'm not going to deprive someone of actually accomplishing things. And that's why I'm going to vote to extend the contract.
Do you ever have any other comments from the council?
Uh, yes. We spoke about the severance. Didn't we, Mayor Protem?
I think we've spoken in the past on that.
Uh, have you seen the, the severance portion of it?
I have.
Okay. Are you happy with it?
Well, there are a, a couple items that I, that I wanted to ask the city attorney if that, that are still open-ended. Is that correct?
In terms of the terms of the contract, this is the contract, in terms of the performance of, uh, goals and tasks that in, in the contract, it does state that there can be additional tasks that can be defined throughout the course of the, the one-year term and the second-year term. So that still is available, yes.
Councilman, uh, my response to you is that I'm concerned primarily with, uh, moving forward with the contract and executing these, uh, goals within a timely manner, uh, rather than severance.
Thank you. Councilman Camacho?
None. I would just like to comment that, um, I feel that the compensation, um, we did receive a study from our HR director and we've had as a council, two retreats, um, in which all of us, we don't always see eye to eye. In the beginning, some of us butted heads with others, but we have been able to communicate with the city manager and, um, he has been performing well, especially during the pandemic. And we constructed the contract. We had a very, we were really hands-on in constructing his contract. So each of us, council members, um, directed the city attorney to put some language into the contract that aligned with some of the specific objectives in which we would hope to see, we expect to see in the next two years. Um, each year he will have an evaluation and he will have an optional, uh, it's an, it's a potential for more compensation. Um, so I feel that in order for us to, um, have a quality city manager that we do, we need to compensate him as such. And this contract allows us to, um, incentivize him in such a way that we can perform even more, um, better than, than the, than our neighboring cities. And I'm, I'm proud to say that. I bet you in two years from now, we are going to accomplish all those things in his contract. So, um, city manager, I'm very, um, I approve this contract and, um, I don't know if there are any other contracts in the neighboring cities that are, where the council members have been so, um, in the, in the weeds on this, but I'm proud to say I think we came up with something that, um, is going to truly compensate our city manager, um, for the hard work that he's done, especially during the pandemic. And I can't wait to see the completion of, of all these tasks that, that come to fruition. So I, I'm in support of this contract.
Madam Mayor, we need a motion to approve.
Yes, can I get a motion, please?
So I'd like to make a motion.
I second.
Okay.
Can we do a roll call on this?
Yes, roll call vote, please.
Council member Elias.
No.
Council member Camacho.
Yes.
Council member Laura.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lutz.
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez.
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
That includes consent. Uh, we go on.
Let's move on to regular agenda items, number, is it 14 or 15?
It's actually 14, Madam Mayor.
14 to 15. And do we have a, we have a presentation? There's a short presentation.
Yes, Mayor, City Council. On this one, if you recall, this was, item was pulled some time ago. Uh, we had to clarify a few things. Those have been clarified. And if you recall, Lenoria, the operators of the sports arena approached the city about renaming, uh, Sports Arena Drive to, uh, Avenida de Vicente Fernandez. You can see the rendering, uh, that's, will be the actual, uh, look of that sign that would go at the entrance and also at the rear of the Sports Arena Drive. Uh, this coincides as well as, uh, the entertainer, uh, son being performing in September at the sports arena. So, uh, hopefully this can move forward, uh, since it's in honor of a legendary singer. And I think, uh, we will definitely have some events planned around, uh, the renaming of the street coming soon.
Wonderful. Any comments from the council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is a wonderful idea. Simply put.
Thank you. Councilman Camacho?
I concur with my colleague. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. I'd like to say mention as well, um, this aligns with El Dia de Seis de Septiembre, which is the Mexican Independence Day. And so it's very much in alignment with our cultural heritage. Vicente Fernandez did perform at the sports arena many times early in his career. Um, his son as well, Alejandro, will be coming to perform in the city and we are, we are going to get a lot of press and excitement over this. Um, so I can't wait to, I can't wait till September. We have a lot, a lot of stuff coming, exciting things for, for our residents. Um, so I think, shall we do a roll call for this one or, yes, let's do a roll call vote for this one. Or, sorry, council member Laura just returned. We're on item number 14, the naming of Vicente Fernandez.
Council member Elias.
Yes.
Council member Camacho.
Yes.
Council member Laura.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lutz.
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. Let's go on to item number 15.
Yes, Mayor, City, uh, Council, I'd like at this time to, uh, have Terry Rodrigue do, with the presentation on the CIP budget.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Um, I appreciate the opportunity tonight to present our, our five-year CIP plan. When I think of, um, uh, a CIP plan, sometimes a question's asked of me was, you know, what, what really is a capital project? And there's many definitions of a capital project from, in the city's standpoint, a capital project is, um, really the, the construction or major rehabilitation and extent of extending life of any infrastructure project that the city owns. And so that puts a bit of a boundary around a capital project. And sometimes it's hard to tell what a maintenance project is versus a capital project. Um, and often we try to take the viewpoint that if the project extends the life of the facility, then it's a capital project. If it purely just maintains the facility as it is, then it's a maintenance project. It doesn't necessarily mean the project is a certain size or a certain type of, or a certain type of facility. So that's, you know, kind of putting a boundary on what is a, what really is a capital project. And as I start, I do want to introduce a few people I have that have joined me here tonight and it's people from our engineering division. Um, and, uh, I've got to turn and see who's, who's here. Uh, but, uh, over on my far left, Luis Osuna, Luis is our assistant, uh, city engineer. Uh, next to him is Kenner Guerrero. Kenner is an associate engineer with our engineering division. Uh, Natalie Carrasco, Natalie, uh, Natalie, I'm sorry, Nadia. I'm sorry, Nadia. Um, and I've known Nadia for a lot of years, so that's very embarrassing. Um, uh, and Nadia's assistant engineer with our, in our engineering division. Uh, Gene Edwards, the senior engineer, uh, in our engineering division. And, um, Maria Correo is our project, uh, is our, um, principal analyst in our engineering division. Um, and I want to introduce them to you because, uh, this small group of people, um, along with the support staff within the city, as well as the consultants they use and the vendors they use, are in charge of all of the capital projects, uh, that go, that go on in the city. And as you'll see, go through this presentation, there's really quite a, quite a large number. So let's go ahead and to the next slide, Gabriel. So, uh, when I, when I think of a project, a capital project, it really has four basic stages. First, we think of the project, that's project development. Somebody dreams up a project for some, for some reason. Uh, the second is paying for the project, how do we fund it? The third is building the project, which is design and construction of a project. And then the fourth stage really is the maintenance of the project. And the CIP plan really, uh, addresses the first three phases of this and not so much the, the maintenance. So the next, uh, next slide, please, Gabriel. So first is new project development and how do projects get into our capital improvement program? And there's, again, in my experience, there's three basic ways. The first is, and the most important and the most comprehensive, it's, it's important, it's in support of council's goals to improve the quality of life of the community. That's where most of our project ideas come from. Uh, and it's to support these goals. The second, which is not insignificant, is adherence to regulatory requirements. Um, as a city and the infrastructure of a As a city and the infrastructure of a city, we have very, quite, very extensive regulatory requirements, whether it's in our water system, storm drain system, sewer system, roadway system, ADA, safety. There's many regulatory requirements that we take into account when we're doing our capital planning. And then third is, really the, as I talked to before, strategically rehabilitating our existing infrastructure to make sure we get the best and most efficient lifecycle costs out of our, our existing infrastructure. Next slide, please Gabriel. We can go on to the next slide. So I'm gonna, we'll do an overview tonight of our capital improvement plan, our continuing projects, our new proposed projects. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the unfunded or underfunded projects, if you will. So the, the five year funded CIP currently have 186, a little over 186 million dollars of funded projects in our current five year CIP program. We actually have 67 projects on the books today, although by the end of June of this year, a number of those projects will be completed, but we'll still have, no doubt, in excess of 50 capital projects on the books. These are some of the more major capital projects in each of the categories. And you can see at the top, each category, the, the funding spread there, 70, over 70 million for bridges, almost 40 million for streets, traffic safety, almost five, parks and facilities, over 18 million, water, 50 million, and sewer and storm drain, almost $4 million in projects. Go ahead, we can go to the next slide, Gabriel. So then we think about, well, how do we fund these projects? And out of the 186 million that we currently have in the funded category, this is the spread of our funds. This is how we, we pay for everything. And as you can see, grants is by far our biggest funding source with nearly half, about 46% of the funding of all of our infrastructure improvements comes from grants. Our water fund, of course, is a very large piece as well, because it funds all of the water improvements. That's about a quarter of, it's about 23% of our, our CIP program. Then there's a number of categories, and I would group together, local return, certificates of participation, SB1, Measure W, and other special funds. Those are all restricted funds that come to the city, generally based on population or some other measurement that we get from the various gas tax measures, sales tax measures, bond measures throughout the, usually state and regional, regional funds. Together, those are about a third of all of our capital project funding. And then in this year, of course, as you well know, the city council has dedicated ARPA funds in, in over 11 million dollars in ARPA funds, which makes up 6% of our, our five year CIP program. And then lesser amounts for CDBG and, and a bit of a general fund as well. So we have that, show that subtotal of 186 million of currently funded and 61 million of unfunded projects in the future. Next slide, Gabriel. So I want to talk about a few of the more significant proposed projects. And the one thing I caution is sometimes it's confusing. We shouldn't confuse continuing projects and new projects as being funded or unfunded. They're not the same. We have some existing projects that are continuing but are still aren't funded. Yet we have some proposed projects that we actually have funding for. So those, they're, they're two different things. Now we're talking about continuing projects versus adding new projects to the five year plan. So in bridge projects, we are, we're looking at doing improvements to the underpasses at Rosemead and Passins. Go ahead to the next slide, Gabriel. Street projects, these are not unusual projects. They're continued efforts to improve our residential and arterial streets, more resurfacing, more cape ceiling. Of course, the median beautification programs in which we, this is one of those examples that they're proposed projects, but we've already got the grant to do them, so they're funded proposed projects versus unfunded. And we also have bus shelter improvements and utility box beautification along, along our corridors. Next section, in the traffic safety category, we've included a traffic management system or traffic operations center is another way of terming it. And that's based on a master plan we're doing now that we anticipate will be finished this next year and make some kind of recommendation for a traffic management center. Next slide. Parks and facilities, there's quite a list of proposed parks and facilities as, you know, you, you can imagine from the presentation you've already received tonight earlier, there's many, the, the city council, as well as the city manager's office and the Parks and Rec Department have developed a number of proposed park projects, some funded, some unfunded. I won't list them all here, but you can see all of the different ones that are new projects. On the left, left, of course, you have some, some considerable ones that are continuing projects as well. So the next slide. Water projects, we have, of course, our major one is our PFAS project, which is a continuing project, as well as our AMI system. But we're also proposing the pressure zone separation project, as well as the storage tank replacements, and then some facility and water main replacement projects. And this spreads over the five years. Next slide, please. And then we have some storm drain projects, sewer and storm drain projects that have been developed out of our master plans that we've listed out over the five year period, mostly in our storm drain and sewer. It's, it's mostly mainline replacements, because our, our infrastructure is getting quite, quite old. Next slide, please. Next one. So just another look at how our capital projects, which are entire, oh, one thing I should say is we're adding about 35 projects for the five year CIP. We're proposing to add 35 projects. So we have $248 million total, as we said, 186 is funded. And this is the, this is how the funding breaks down of the, of the funding that we, we have. And then the green, of course, is the unfunded, which is about 25% of our five year program. This just represents the different funding sources, which we mentioned earlier. Next slide. The next two slide, this slide and the next one actually just shows some of the grant, you can go back to the first one, Gabriel, sorry. These are some of our, these are our grant projects, our major grant projects that the city is either working on or has got, received grants for projects that we will be doing in the subsequent upcoming years. So again, I'll give you a second to glance at these. And then the next slide is a remainder of that list of, of, of grant projects. Next slide, then Gabriel. So these are some unfunded projects, or these are the major unfunded projects by category and fiscal year. And so this shows you as our, of our five year program, we would like to include these, these projects in our five year program. But there's an effort that needs to go on also to get funding for it. Grant funding, other sources of funding, partnering with, with other agencies. And you can read that for yourself, I won't go through all the numbers. But you can see one of our major areas of funding gap is our street resurfacing program over the years. But also, you know, we have major gaps in our storm drain system. There's other park projects and other facility projects that have some significant gaps. And before I leave this slide, I was going to ask the assistant, interim assistant city manager and finance director, Angelina Garcia, if she'd like to comment on our unfunded projects.
Well, thanks, Terry, you said it all very well. I, I think the only thing to note here, two things, I think in the past, there was an interest in entering into more certificates of participation or, or obtaining more certificates of participation to fund for street improvement projects. Being that we now have so much, have had so much luck with grant opportunities, as well as, you know, we're rated double A now, we want to seek every alternative possible from grants to maybe bank loans, lines of credit, to be able to, to provide for the necessary funding for some of these projects, as well as revenue enhancements that we'll talk to you about during our study session for the budget. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
You brought up the proposed project, the Rosemead Boulevard and Passins repair, but it's not listed, is it funded or unfunded? The bridge project?
Bridges.
Rosemead Boulevard and Passins.
I'm going to look at my list, because I don't recall if that one is funded or unfunded.
I'm asking because I pass through this every day, and I see children and parents walking to school. It's South Ranchito, I believe, south or north, the Puma. I believe it's South Ranchito, and I see it, it looks like there are no barriers for protection. It's a very busy street and definitely it's unsightly in terms of, it looks like the rain has rusted the bars there and it looks like rust dripping down. So that definitely is an unsightly and unsafe, I think, part of our city.
So those, that project right now?
North Ranchito, by North Ranchito is Almetry.
I'm sorry, the construction for that project, the construction dollars for that project is unfunded. We didn't actually put the project in because we don't have the construction dollars yet. We're just, now, we have funded a, a study for a consultant to tell us what it's going to cost to fix it, to design it. And at that point, when we get that number, then we can come back, you know, identify funding and come back and actually put the project in.
Wonderful, well, I'd like to advocate for that one. I know definitely it's right next to North Ranchito, and I see children and families walking every day in that area.
And next slide, Gabriel, which I think is, ends my
Yeah.
Normal presentation.
Sorry.
Answer any questions you might have. And of course, our engineering department is here, and once you get two questions in, it'll go beyond my knowledge and I'll turn to ask them.
Wonderful, any comments or questions for the council?
I just have some comments, you know, it's appropriate for us to recognize Public Works Week and have you make a presentation of the $248 million in capital improvement projects in our city in the next five years. I mean, it just shows the amount of work that your staff, all staff in your department have done to contribute to it. And I know that there was others that contribute to this CIP project that consists of every department based on project lists and budgets and so forth. But, you know, yes, we don't have funding for about 69 million of this, but I know that we're aggressively looking to get some additional grant monies, whether it be the teen center, real hunt of parks, the additional funds that we need there. I do believe with this team, we're going to be able to accomplish that. But once again, just the magnitude of having $248 million, whether it be bridges, road improvements, parks, intersections, sidewalks, you know, you name it, it's, it's great for it to finally start continuing. And we're not over COVID, but, you know, done with COVID, but it's great to be able to start getting us back on track on these projects and the community is going to be, be able to see a major transformation with these projects in the next coming years. So thank you to you and your team and everyone who has participated to get us to this point, thank you.
Councilmember, I also like to highlight that, as you know, this, this city council adopted a community workforce agreement. So there is a local hire provision, so our residents will benefit from a lot of this work moving forward.
Thank you for highlighting that.
Could you explain that in detail?
Sure. We adopted what's referred to as a community workforce agreement with the Building Trades Association. And what that will do is there's a 30% local hire provision for our residents in the city of Pico Rivera. So again, it would provide them the opportunity to enter into an apprentice program and actually work on the projects that are being constructed here in the city of Pico Rivera.
Now, we had talked about the possibility of starting the training apprentice program
Yes.
Here, are we still thinking about that?
Yeah, that is still something in concept. We've, we'll continue to have those discussions now that, you know, COVID is somewhat lifting to some extent. We're going to facilitate those meetings to, to have, continue that dialogue.
That is very, very important.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Laura?
I too would like to thank public works staff, all the engineer, your engineering department, everyone involved. I've many times have sat in offices and talked to them directly. They've come to me about different projects and ways in which they think they, they can be enhanced. And they've given me assignments to, to do, and I'll happily do that. You know, when, when I've engaged the staff, you get a sense that they want to be here. They want to work for the city. They want to work for the city because they believe in what's, what's taking place. Or it's also that, and it's sometimes they were born and raised here. And they have a really strong connection and commitment to this community, and they want to see better things for the city. And I thank them for that. I thank them for their dedication, I thank them for the time that they've spent. I know even coming on, on weekends or working on their birthdays, those things don't go unnoticed. And I just want to thank everyone for their dedication, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Director Rodrigue, I have no doubt in my mind that you and your staff will take care of business over the upcoming years and make the residents proud of the infrastructure upgrades and maintenance that are going to be completed. Thank you, thank you for your commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you, this is listed as receive and file, do we need a motion as receive and file, correct?
Receive and file.
Okay, thank you. Do we need a motion? No, we're, yes, we do, okay.
A second.
Second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, motions unanimous. Let's move on to our city manager's report.
Mayor, nothing to report at this time. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank council for extending the contract for another two years. My first job here in the city of Pico Rivera was the Pico Rivera newspaper, delivering papers. I'm glad to continue the service, was born and raised, went to the local schools, raised my family here. And I feel I owe it to this community to continue to serve in that capacity. It's something that I'm inspired to do. And again, just wanted to thank you for entrusting me to do that, so thanks again.
Madam Mayor, I stepped out, my apologies. We still have the item that we added on to the agenda that we need to consider and
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we forgot, I forgot about item number 7.5. Oh, I thought we approved that with, in a motion, one through.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Then that's fine. Okay.
Thank you.
My apologies.
Okay, now we can go on to good of the order. This includes any AB 123, 1234 reports, intergovernmental agency meetings, new business and old business. And I remind my colleagues, we are not allowed to discuss items that have been, not been agendized. So would anyone like to begin? Councilmember Laura?
Yeah, just real briefly, I don't, I don't have anything to report that I'm aware of about AB 1234. But I do want to just highlight this as, this was Public Works Week. Myself, Mayor Protem and the mayor, we happened to visit the public work staff, thank you for having us. And once again, thank you for all the hard work that you guys, and all the effort. It doesn't go unnoticed, we really appreciate everything you do. Let's see, there was, I'd like to get a second on an item, and this would fall hopefully under the infrastructure committee. This involves taking a look at potential sites for EV recharging stations. I think that there's a number of sites that we can look at. This would be beneficial for the city for a number of reasons. One, it would promote green energy, clean energy, it would promote prime, it would have some potential revenue for the city. And also, it would help those who have EV charging vehicles that are just going to become more numerous have options. I think we're strategically located off the 605 freeway, the 60 and the 5 freeways, where we can start taking a look at sites that we can provide EV charging stations. So if I could get a second, just so that I can start working with staff, and it would probably fall under the infrastructure committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also'd like to thank the Public Works to give us the opportunity to hang out with them. Briefly for their lunch hour, and, you know, we gave our gratitude for all the hard work that they do day in, day out, sometimes at nighttime, and sometimes on the weekends and overtime. So we really do appreciate, got an opportunity to hang out and play basketball with you guys. Now, with that item there, I did want to talk about a new item, and that is revenue generation for the city. Oftentimes, we're always talking about spending money, and it's wonderful that we have an all-star staff that gets grants, but grants doesn't cover everything, and so we have to talk about revenue generation. Wanted to see if I can get a second on exploring in a study session, revenue generation opportunities within the city, and say, within the next council meeting. Specifically, city licenses, right now, it's the heavy burden of the city licenses on the small businesses, and I wanted to take a look at maybe warehousing to see how there can be adjustments on that, and revenue generation that increases for our city. At the end of the day, benefits our residents. We're talking about possibility of three to five million extra dollars in, for the city, which ultimately benefits our residents. If I could get a second on that.
Second it.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. And that is in alignment with our budget discussion as well, I believe. So a prior study session, and we can just brainstorm ideas of other, you bring us ideas, we bring you ideas, and, and I think that would be in alignment. Council member Camacho?
Yeah, just in light of the fact that we've been speaking about the dog park and moving in that direction, and as a representative of Siaka, the, Siaka, the animal shelter that we do business with, they're currently and actively adopting adoptions available, so for both cats, dogs, and many other critters out there.
Bunnies, they have bunnies?
They have everything. So, you know, go, go look at the website and hopefully you can adopt a pet. Outside of that, just wanted to thank our staff, our consultant, and my entire colleagues. We had the opportunity to have a council retreat last Saturday, and I think it was very productive, great dialogue, and allowed us to meet in a more comfort setting to express our ideas, our opinions, our concerns. And, and I think with, if we continue to do that, will allow us to continue working together as well. So just wanted to highlight that as well. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Council member Lias.
Yeah. You know, one of the things that I came into the council with was the, was the need to be able to work with the district, okay? And it looks like it's, it's coming true here. With that, our partners are in a little bit of a jam. There is some special training that's supposed to take place in July, and so, and they are asking if, if we have any space that would approximately handle 80 participants, school teachers, again, for special training. Can we take a look and see what, what facilities we have available for them?
Yeah, if I can get some details, a little bit more details.
Yes, I will. Okay. The other item is that since we're, you know, talking a lot about sports here, we had the athletic director, Mr. Goyanaga, who has done a fantastic job in terms of the, you know, the sporting program there. If I can have a second, what I'd like to do is actually have him come on the agenda to give us a report on the, the accomplishments that the sport teams have, have done in this, in this school year. So again, I would appreciate a second if we could agendize him and again, present, you know, present some of the, the sports accomplishments. Thank you. Well, a while back ago, we had approved and placed on the agenda a recognition for the Armenian, Mesrobian school. They were established in 1965 and were able to, you know, to not celebrate their 55 year because, again, we were in the middle of the pandemic. But what we did do was that we said that we would recognize them in some way for being the great neighbors that they are. Can we, can we schedule that recognition?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, and the last item is the summer jobs program. When are we scheduled to have, to begin the?
Pam, I don't know if you can chime in on this one, on the summer jobs program in particular?
Yes, because I, I saw an announcement, and it said September. And the problem is, is that that's going to be when they get, return back to school. You know, the, you know, they're going to be taking their, their summer off in the first, first week of June.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into that and get back to you unless you have any updated information at this time, Pam?
I don't know what the program is, per se. Is it, is it a special program? And we're, we're constantly hiring right now on a, on a revolving basis, so I'm not sure if this is a specific program.
Well, you know, we had a great job fair that last time, and again, it was, it was fantastic. Everybody, you know, everybody in the, the city just appreciated that, if that could be possible.
Okay.
We just had a job fair two weeks ago.
Right. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So I have a few items. I was able to attend myself and council member Camacho to, we received a check from our Congresswoman Linda Sanchez for $2.5 million that is going to help in addressing a portion, just a portion of our infrastructure needs for the PFOS and PFOA infrastructure repairs. So we, we have enough funds of, that we've compiled through various grants and, and other, our ARPA funds, a ton of money that we've had to pull together and to make it happen. So we will be beginning that construction soon. Looking forward to a groundbreaking, I believe, this year that will be happening. I also attended the National Day of Prayer with Mayor Protem, was present, and council member Camacho as well attended. So thank you for all our pastors and parishioners that attended that. I attended the SASFA, I'm the representative for the city, it's the Southeast Area Social Services Funding Authority, and we are in the process of going after funding for our food service programs. For seniors, in the past, prior to the pandemic, they used to have congregate meals, meaning they would go to the senior center and get to eat and mingle in person at lunchtime. They pay a small $2.75, $2.75 optional donation that we request if they can afford it. They're looking to bring that back. During the pandemic, they started with frozen meals, and those were delivered to their homes. So now they're looking into, now that senior centers are starting to open again. Pico Rivera, they also recognized us as great partners. We, they utilize our parking spaces for the vans, there are the SASFA vans. We are one of the largest, our residents receive a lot of the, the senior services of the food. So that's a great program. I wanted to bring up a couple of things that are up and coming. Proud to announce in light of Public Works Week, on the 25th, in two weeks, May 25th, the Durfee Underpass will be opening. So we are going to have the grand opening of that. Several residents have asked me, when is that opening? And I'm one of the residents, I live on the north side, and I have to go all the way around in order to cross through the city. So I'm really excited for that and proud to announce. So residents and public are welcome to come to that on May 25th at, I believe, 10 a.m. So we will see you early for that. And then I wanted to invite my colleagues. I am a member of WELL, Water Education for Latino Leaders. Council member Camacho was a, a member of this cohort right before me, several years before me. We are hosting a conference on June 11th. It's going to be here at the Albert Robles WRD Water Replenishment District Center. Given that there have been many articles coming out in LA Times regarding Metropolitan Water District has enforced, well, starting June 1st, they're going to enforce more water restrictions. The governors have recommended a reduced, recommending Californians to reduce our water usage in light of the drought. So this conference is going to be other elected officials, water experts to share about what's going on in our district. We're not in that, in the Met District, we have our own district, but we are all impacted by, by this drought. We all are in the same area. So I'd like to invite my colleagues, you're welcome to attend. It's going to be June 11th during the day at the WRD. We're proud to host it here in Pico Rivera, and we're very, we're very proactive about our water situation right now. That's something that we're addressing. Also, was brought to my attention, we have some, the Pride Program from the LA sheriffs, they'll be graduating on May 18th. And I would like to request if perhaps in June, we could bring the deputy Perez, some of the sheriffs, to share about that, and maybe even present some of the students a certificate if we can. They're graduating on May 18th. And with that, that's it for me, but I would like to recognize today, Happy Mother's Day. Today is actually Mexican Mother's Day, celebrated in Mexico, Guatemala, and El Salvador. So Happy Mother's Day to our city clerk, our, our deputy city clerk, and all of the moms in Pico Rivera. Thank you, and Happy Mother's Day to you. So thank you. With that, I think we will adjourn. Oh, no, not yet. We have closed session items. Please, city attorney.
We have two items, Madam Mayor. One is the labor negotiation matter, and the second one is the add-on item, which is the anticipated litigation matter. Includes my announcement for closed session, it'd be appropriate to recess in the closed session.
Thank you.